Lord, we're coming for you this evening, oh God. I just want to say thank you again. You've been so good and you've been so kind. Lord, we continue to bless your holy name in this city. Continue to cover this city with your blood. Continue to fill it with your spirit. Continue to lift us with your love, oh God. Bless this council, God. Bless it, oh God. Let us be loved for one another, God. Sweet communication with each other, God. Let us lift out our hands, God, and praise you tomorrow, oh God. Lord, we thank you this evening. Lord, we thank you this evening. We thank you for West Memphis. We thank you for our mayor, oh God, what he's doing. Continue to string him and lift him up and encourage him, oh God. Lord, you blessed this place, oh God. Bless these peoples, oh God. Lord, we thank you. Lord, we praise you today, God, because you've been good, oh God. You've been very good, and we thank you, Lord. We thank you, Lord, because Corona got to leave here, and we thank you right now, oh God, for covering this city with your blood, oh God. Fill it with your love, oh God. Wrap it with your mercy, oh God. Lord, you do it today, God. You do it today, God. Bless this city tomorrow, God. Breathe on us, oh God. Lift us up, oh God. Bless us today, God. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Stand and please, the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just as far.
All right. I'm going to call this meeting to order officially. Uh, Ms. Senior Clerk, will you please call the room?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
Counselor Kat.
Here.
Counselor Crum.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Holt.
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson. Counselor Muhammad.
Present.
Counselor Monday.
Present.
Counselor Murray.
Here.
Counselor Pulliam.
Present.
Counselor Wheeler.
Here.
Nine out of ten present, sir.
We got nine out of ten present, so we do have a quorum. Uh, I'm going to start out with minutes, what's the end of corrections, to the minutes.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? The minutes are approved. We had no old business, councilman, well, no ordinances either, so. I'll go through it.
We're going to do something a little bit different if they say the term.
All right.
I'll make a motion, we read, I mean, R. 2 through 6 by Ty Longley, and if you don't mind, we can read R. 1.
You got a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? It's approved. Let's see the term.
All right, this is R. 1. A resolution naming the new fire station number three, Chief Dennis Brewer Fire Station Number Three. Whereas, Chief Brewer became a firefighter for the West Memphis Fire Department in 1988. He achieved the rank of Lieutenant in 2001, Deputy Inspector in 2004, and Division Chief in 2007. He retired in 2013 from the West Memphis Fire Department. And whereas, Chief Brewer came out of retirement when he answered the call of Mayor Marco McClendon in January 2019 to become Fire Chief of the West Memphis Fire Department. Chief Dennis Brewer became the third black fire chief in the city of West Memphis. And whereas, Chief Dennis Brewer was a distinguished and highly respected member of the city of West Memphis Fire Department and the community as a whole. And whereas, Chief Brewer earned the respect and gratitude of fellow firefighters and the citizenry of the great city of West Memphis by dedicating himself to protecting and serving for more than 26 years. He was also a positive role model for all ages by displaying strong morals and an ethical code of conduct in his personal and professional life. And whereas, Chief Brewer has come to symbolize the very best in West Memphis Fire Department's emergency and safety services personnel. And now, therefore be it resolved that West Memphis City Council and the West Memphis Fire Commissioners hereby name the new fire station number three located at East Broadway and Martin Luther King Boulevard, the Chief Dennis Brewer Fire Station Number Three in memory of Chief Dennis Brewer.
Hearing the resolution, can I get a motion and second to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you also very much, Ms. Honey, for being here. Hopefully, we have all of the facts correct. If not, just let us know, and we'll make the corrections. I'll win from whatever history I could possibly find to draft this particular resolution. And I pray that you're being knocked off your feet once the vote comes down.
I will say that, uh, that, uh, this is a biography that I haven't, I've had a chance to read it, but, um, this is what we were talking about, kinda, you know, the last two meetings on.
You should have asked me, I would have told you.
But I wanted to see it in a, uh, a more, uh, I'm not going to say more professional form, but a, a formalized designation sheet, uh, so, but, but it was, this is a good write-up.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
That's fine.
Hearing none, and all in favor, aye? Opposed? It passes.
Yes, sir, Councilman. To the Brewer family, y'all know I knew Dennis pretty much the biggest of his life. He was a good friend of mine. Nice young man, always respectable, his wife, they would see me everywhere, and they, he was always respectable, just as nice as he could be. I love Dennis. I love the work he did for our city. I know the changes he went through, being what he wanted to be, and that was a fireman. But, uh, if the, if it's okay with the city council, and I'm asking now, I want to have a celebration, when we open the fire station, I will take care of everything. I want his family and the friends there and all the council there, I will do that. And that's what I want to do. Thank you.
Well, are you going? Ms. Honey?
We can get that number.
Yeah, I'm going to get it. Ms. Honey, I ain't got to say a word, you already know, yeah, how I feel about him, you know, so. Want to add?
Are you going to do a fish fry?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Before we move on, I'd ask the senior clerk to give us a resolution number for the resolution.
That resolution number is 2230.
It's 2230.
Right, and Mayor McClendon, if you don't mind, once we, we get your signature on there and everything is read, adopted, could we get a copy of this framed to give to, uh, Mrs. Brewer and her family?
Yes, ma'am. I'm doing the action now.
With that number on there.
I should probably tie the number on.
Thank you, City Council, so much. Thank you, and Fire Commissioners.
All right. See the term?
All righty.
I'm going to go to R. 2.
R. 2 is a resolution to create within the city of West Memphis the position of Public Works Director and for other purposes.
I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Ms. City Clerk, will you get that resolution number?
That resolution number will be 2231.
2231. R. 3, Mr. Turn.
R. 3 is a resolution to create within the city of West Memphis the position of Study Director for the Metropolitan Planning Organization and for other purposes.
I get a motion and second.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Will you get that number? Ms. City Clerk?
That'll be 2232.
2232. City Attorney, R. 4.
R. 4 is a resolution to create within the city of West Memphis the position of Assistant Planner for the Metropolitan Planning Organization and for other purposes.
The motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
That will be Resolution 2233.
All right. Ms. City Attorney, R. 5.
R. 5 is a resolution to create within the city of West Memphis the position of Engineer 3 for the Metropolitan Planning Organization and for other purposes.
I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Resolution number 2234.
Sorry. 2234. All right, Ms. City Attorney, R. 6.
R. 6 is a resolution to create within the city of West Memphis the position of Engineer 1 for the Metropolitan Planning Organization and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Ms. Clerk?
2235.
You said 2235, 32, uh?
2235.
All right. Thank you all for passing all those positions as well. Uh, I had no permission request. Uh, we're going down to committee reports, I guess I'll start with fire. Mr. Murphy?
Fire.
I mean, I'm sorry, police. I'm sorry, police.
That's okay.
You, you, you come here, you want to?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Okay, our police commission did meet on July 8th, 2020. Quorum was established, and I want to say first that I want to thank, uh, Police Department, our chief and assistant chief. Uh, I called them with some issues, and we've had them all over the city about reckless driving and speeding. And I, I see a difference in war and for, and I want to let them know, we appreciate it. Uh, he informed us that if any of the council members, councilors, if you have any issues with speeding and reckless driving or what have you, give him a notice and they'll be on it. They'll observe. Okay, the meeting was turned over to Assistant Chief, uh, Langston, and the discussions we had were two openings currently in the hiring process for office. They're in their academy. They're doing the interviews, testing, background checks, and they're moving forward with the process. We also have one new officer starting July 13th. We have two, we have three new SRO, School Resource Officers scheduled for training on July 20th through 24th. We have one new, we have one that left, and we have one that was reassigned. Reassignment, uh, Captain Ken Mitchell, he retired, so he, he moved Lieutenant Birch, Captain Presley, and Major Allen to either patrol or administrative duties, okay? Code enforcement update, there were many complaints. Uh, he moved an extra officer to assist that, uh, process, and litter and debris citations were read, and most people complied. Um, and he's sending notices, notices currently for violations. One, 141,501 dollars and 2 cents will reimburse for overtime for this, uh, month of June. Southland and Federal Task Force for Schools. School shooting training, de-escalation, defensive tactics, these are done once a year. The active shooting train, training is in the summertime. The new de-escalation training and the defensive tactics were basic handcuffing, resisting to prevent energy, um, injuries to, um, citizens, okay? So this is a special training, teaching, uh, training for how to interact in certain situations, and we know what's going on in our, in our nation today. So this is to avoid some of that, uh, uh, from happening. Uh, we have 31, uh, vehicles that identified, were identified and removed from inventory. Uh, these were vehicles that were either down, and we were paying insurance on, they were notified, they were identified, and we no longer pay insurance on some of these vehicles, we don't even own. So they were identified and removed from inventory. Uh, record policy change, letters were sent to Marion Records as of August the 1st, 2020, only registered companies from West Memphis will qualify to operate in our city. Uh, lights around the police station parking lot will be upgraded for safety and security. A lot of the lights were out, and there was concern about employees entering and leaving the building. Uh, handguns ordered, they were ordered, and delivery is now set for mid-August. It was supposed to be in July, it's moved, it moved up to mid-August, and we're just about there, so we're looking forward to them having that. With no further discussion, uh, issues, the meeting was adjourned. Thank you.
Is there any, is Captain Langston, or, I mean, they're not in here?
Chief West and Major Allen is here.
Well, I, I wanted to commend, uh, Chief West, uh, on number nine, item number one, for bringing back into, into, uh, active service of, uh, only, only Marion, uh, West Memphis Records will service West Memphis, and, uh, that's, that's a good deal.
Chief West, tell him to turn around and say, "Look at me," say, "Thank you."
That's a lot of, uh, tax revenue that we were losing, and we're going to get it back now. Yes, thank you, Chief.
Yeah. One.
Huh?
Turn around, look at me. You up?
Oh, okay, you up. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Um, Fire Commission, Ms. Muhammad.
Uh, yes, sir, the Fire, uh, Commission met July 14th. I do have for you, Ms. Patricia, City Clerk, I have the, uh, the records, so you won't have to worry about writing everything down. This is not approved yet, but just for your information, uh, we, we met, and some of the topics, uh, discussed were, uh, new hires, resignations, promotions and vacancies. Uh, we have a position open for one fire chief, two firefighter, EMT paramedics. There are 72 positions, 77 vacancies, 62 uniformed members, and two civilian, three civilian secretaries. Four of the six, uh, single role paramedic positions have been filled. There were no retirements for this period. The PPE, uh, is in use as already. Building maintenance was about the same. Training, I believe, the West Memphis Fire Department had their agility test on June 27th, 2020, with 32 applicants, they, who took the exam, and 20 of those passed it. Four personnel are at the Arkansas Fire Academy as of this report. In EMT school, they began July 6th, 2020, and it's a six-week program. They will graduate on August 14th of this year. The Arkansas Fire Academy School will begin August 17th, 2020. EMS report, the command staff personnel are closely monitoring the COVID-19 situation. Chief Rosen, Chief Clay are assigned to the mayor's COVID-19 task force. And daily, the COVID-19 situation is reported on our West Memphis page, so if you want an update of the status of the COVID-19 in the city of West Memphis, just go to the West Memphis web, uh, page. The tri balance, balance ending on 4/30/2020 is 21.25% for supplies and services. And basically, uh, Ms. Torrey and Mayor McClendon were going to the, to the bank on the 14th?
Yes.
To Fidelity Bank, I must specify which one, to sign papers for the two, how many ambulances?
Three.
Three ambulances that the city is receiving, so they should be coming, uh, very soon. And we have no further discussion, and our meeting adjourned at, uh, 12:20. Motion by Pulliam and second by Mr. Wheeler.
All right.
That is my heart.
Thank you. Do public works.
Public works, Matt, I'm just so sorry, I thought I had my notes with me, but forgive me for that, I'll have the next time. But I do know that we discussed the ongoing problem that we were having with picking up the, the garbage, and of course, we, uh, we have the, the roll-offs that are out there, and people are really utilizing those in a great way. I would like to ask for our residents, if you can keep from piling garbage all around those roll-offs, do that. I know sometimes they may be full, and there may be people who cannot throw them on top of that roll-off, but let's try to keep it as clean and neat as we possibly can. And I think we did acquire help from Judge Wheeler to help us with that, and we are doing the very, very best we possibly can to make sure our garbage and our trash is picked up. We're trying to clean our city, so just be patient with us, because we're going to get it done. And I should have a more detailed report. Mayor, can you have some?
Yeah, I also want to add something to that. First, I definitely want to commend all of our sanitation department, uh, family members. We have cleaned this city. Uh, actually, I've been serving more as Public Works Director than mayor the last couple of weeks, but we have gotten everything through, we are all parts of this city, we have gotten it clean. Um, we got majority of all of our vehicles back up and running, um, staying on top of our mechanics, making sure that our vehicles are running on a daily basis. Uh, I actually been picking up trash that normally we wouldn't pick up, and you all forgive me, but I just feel if we don't get it, uh, individuals are going, just going to leave it there, because a lot of it is in front of empty houses, it's been there over a year. I know area on Sulu Lane that we, we got there, area on Lemon Street, and all through the city, pretty much, we've been making sure we're getting everything cleaned. I want to commend the men and women for working overtime, they worked on Saturday. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Judge Willie Williams for his help with assisting us with another gravel truck drop, but we back on top of it. Every house has been touched. I also want to just remind you all a few things. Around August the 10th, we will begin the new dumpsters and the new, uh, individual cans for each residential house. At this point, we are not in backyard service, but soon I'll be asking you all to approve an ordinance that will, uh, permit the city of West Memphis to have curbside service, where they will have to bring them out to the front, but until that time, it's still backyard service. Also, uh, starting Monday, we are going to do a tire sweep. I got with Judge, uh, Wheeler and his, uh, road manager, and we're hoping to get two trailers empty, so we can start removing them tires from the city shop as well as, if you look at many of the things that we pick up, they leave the tires behind because we don't pick up tires. But I'm not advertising you throw your tires on the front, uh, road, but we are going to pick up tires for next week to make sure that we get a hit of that, and we're going to hope from that time on, if anyone got to get rid of some tires, uh, to dispose them properly, uh, and get rid of them. Um, also, the big dumpster, the big dumpsters has been phenomenal for us, and have done a great job. I just asked them to please, don't place the furniture outside of the dumpsters, make sure you put them in. And those dumpsters were designed, actually, to throw away our, our garbage, because our gravel trucks have always still ran pretty smooth, so we can pick them up. So I just ask, uh, to commend our sanitation department and, and the people, just continue to keep doing the right job, you all know, while we back on track with the, uh, trash.
Let me ask you one quick question, I guess, I don't know, uh, are we, are we still exploring the, uh, possibility of probably looking at trying to get a, you know, a, AC, what they call it, AC?
ASC certified?
Yeah, mechanic.
Yes, but also, we, we, I'm going to share with you also some information, because if, if you all decide to go to a leasing program, leasing going to provide trucks where we wouldn't need that many. So it just depends on what decision you all come up with. But right now, actually, all our trucks, we got, actually, we got six, six gravel trucks, and five of them are up right now. One, we got, you know, getting fixed, and we got, uh, ready to load this down, and all three of our front end loads are up, but ASC certified, we don't need to go away from there, because all of our mechanics definitely need to be ASC certified, so we still going to look into that, but it just depends on more, we need more, depending on if you all go to a leasing program or continue to just bounce straight out. That's all I want to add on that. Uh, what's the end of other, I know AMP was counsel, Chamber of Commerce, then have a meeting. Um, I got one more announcement, I want to make sure I get to the people. Was there anything else? All right. Governor Asa Hutchinson, on Thursday, issued a statewide order requiring residents to wear face masks in public. The mandate takes effect Monday. It requires residents to wear protective coverings in all indoor environments where social distancing is not possible, and they are exposed to people who aren't part of their household. It requires a mask to be worn outdoors under the same circumstances. There are exceptions for children under 10 years old and people who are unable to wear masks because of a physical disability or medical condition. So right now, the city of West Memphis, it is mandatory, but one thing I do want to thank you all, because May 6th, you all approved a resolution, a resolution, encouraging and recommending, strongly recommending, all peoples in public to wear masks, so it's good to know how the support of the governor behind you all, but you all did it a month, well, two months before he even signed off on it, so I just want everyone to know. Councilman?
Isn't it effective immediately for council members? Is it effective immediately?
Monday.
No, no, for council members, it's effective immediately.
Immediately.
You're under arrest.
Well, we, we got some, we got some masks, if you need one, we'll get you some, and,
um... When, when you're inside, it doesn't matter if you're six feet away.
And all our city employees, when they come into contact with public, they are always, always required, so like, if you come here without a mask and go, that's a Patricia office, you need a mask on.
Could we, uh, get a copy of that, you know, on to that order that he issued, put it on, uh, put it on, uh?
Well, Nick can step in here, y'all ready?
Thank you.
I'll have it on the municipal website, it's not there yet.
Um, Councilman Monday, if you want to, oh, okay.
Everything is, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah.
And one other quick thing, you know, someone be quiet.
See, I think we should be an example to everyone else by wearing a mask.
Do you hear what I'm saying?
Councilman Pulliam.
Let me go ahead. I think, um, we really need to sit down and think about revisiting our fireworks ordinance, I mean, because that's something we definitely need to discuss, and I, and everybody probably need to get a copy and take a look at it, because there's some things that we truly need to do, because, you know, they going, I mean, they got some stuff out there now.
Those are bombs.
Yeah, and so, to me, I don't mind, you know, well, of course, we always just work on it, that's...
I want to tell you, I read a little statement where it said that some people 4th of July, it's actually 4th of July, but some other people 4th of July, it's, uh, June 30th to July 14th.
Well, well, again, the only thing that bothers me about our ordinance, we, you can pop my whole week, and like, now, they got stuff now, I mean, you never heard before, and then, you know, I don't want to hear that all night, all day.
I got a dog that's shit. I got a dog that's about 10 pounds, and through the whole 4th of July weekend, I had to go to the dentist, but she can jump eight foot flat footed, and she's just a loss of oxygen. And that poor dog like that is stroking.
Councilperson Pulliam, I've got those ordinances on my desk, that fireworks ordinance, and I've been reading it and marking up some stuff on it, but I also have firing guns within the city limits on my desk, and that needs to be redone, because the, the fee, a fine for firing them are like $5 the first time.
Yeah, I think there's a state statute on that.
Yeah, well, that needs to be updated, too.
Yeah, yeah, and, and like I say, you know, what we probably, I'm just saying, each one of us, I mean, if we can get a copy, email to, so everybody have a copy of the order, so we can sit down and kind of, you know...
Well, since we, since we all saying what we need...
Okay, appreciate it.
Since we all saying what we need, I know we got to go, I need this council to really start to work on some legislation, because with this new plan that Torrey, uh, Councilman Cad, the new Public Works Director, I really want to get into turning down houses, and I know you gave me a lot of information, and when you can, get it back to me, come up with some rest, some ordinances, to make sure that we don't have to go through all this red tape we go through to get them torn down to get our community better.
Well, I think it's quite a few things to be rid of, because I'm talking about four, it's just like the tires and all this stuff, I mean, there's some things that they had talked about, you know, some time back, you know, when we did one of those public, uh, safety meetings, that we can do to count, cut down on a lot of the tires, and even the cars that we have, so that's something we can talk about, you know, later.
Mayor, what about, what about the cars that are in the backyards that have been abandoned and sitting there, and nothing's being done about those at all?
Well, what, what you all got to do, you're legislators, you got to put some legislative to the turn, and make sure, if we don't have nothing on what we can do, and you all get some legislation written, and get on the books, and we're getting it enforced.
Well, uh, uh, I can remind us of this, me and Alvin and Cat talked about some years, how many years ago, that we was talking about pulling the, what it's looking at, but we haven't done it to this day, and I'm quite sure that was about 10, 12, 13 years ago, so.
Well, well, y'all got a lot on the agenda, we got a lot to go, so, hey, hearing nothing else, uh, do you want to have anything else?
All in favor, aye? All in favor?